Good evening and welcome to the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of Litchfield Board of Selectmen. We just came out of a non-public session and paperwork review and we'd like to start this meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Very good. Good evening, everybody. Let's see. Up first, we have a review and approval of consent items. We have an AP manifest for eleven twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of one million four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. And a payroll manifest for November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of sixty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and one cent. Communications received since November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, which are all in the portal and available for view. And we have general assistance expendable trust fund transfer approval on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any items that anybody would like to discuss or remove? Or if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes that the consent is read.
Motion by Mr. Brunel.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Queenum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Questions for additional items and other business?
Yes, I would like to add an item. I would like to add to agenda item number seven for the Veterans World War Two Memorial to also have an additional person added, Edmund D. Leary for the World War Two Memorial Edition. So we'll do both, both people.
Motion with Ms. Queenum, the second from the...
I'll second it.
You're too late, by Mr. Brunel.
I spoke up.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Usain? Six four zero one.
If somebody hears, the name would be on the plaque.
Public input will occur no earlier than six forty-five PM, which it is six forty-five PM, so we'll open the floor to public input. Any members of the public that want to come up?
Oh, this is quick and easy.
Corey Flynn, one, two, three, Hillcrest Road.
Hello, Mr. Flynn.
Hello. Last time I was here, John Brunel saw I had to bring something forward when I came to sit in a meeting.
I did.
And I actually happened to have something. It's just some, probably a clerical error in oversight, but I have here the special event application for the town of Litchfield. And it lists several of the rules that for the parades and events there are a bunch of the older ones that were not in the new ordinance. So I have the list, so you guys can take it and give it to whoever needs to amend it, I guess. So I'll give it to you guys.
Is the form on, the online form, is this incorrect?
It's not online, I believe. I looked for it online, I couldn't find it. This was given to me by Amber, who got it from Janice, from the Spirit of Litchfield.
Then that might be a form.
Okay. In that case, yeah, so...
We'll take it and make sure.
I couldn't find the online form, so...
Give this to...
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll check into that.
Yeah, thank you.
Figure it out. And I did hear from Mr. Brennan today that they are collecting donations for the fireworks display, for the Christmas Litchfield display.
It's on Facebook.
It is on there? Okay.
It's on Facebook.
It looks like they must have come up with enough to do it.
I think so. I think some people have already reached out.
My understanding is she's stopping by Wednesday morning with the contract signed and that it's the selectmen's intention that we allow them to purchase the fireworks even if the fire chief does not give approval for them to be set off and that they will be stored in a safe place until they are able.
We're at police station. We did discuss that, we discussed that last meeting.
Yeah, and it has to be approved by rec tomorrow night, which I'm sure will be. There was two contingencies. One was the chief and the second one was rec, rec approval.
Correct.
Yep. And the other was snow.
Well, we've had plenty of rain so far and we're getting more, so I think it's going to be plenty wet. So thank you to the weather lady.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have the approval of the minutes for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Everybody have a chance to check them out?
Yep.
Any changes? Modifications? Nothing? Giving none? A motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gannon.
Second again, you want reverse?
Second by Mr. Lynch. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Usain? Motion carries five zero zero.
Hearing aid doesn't work on this side.
Up next, two thousand twenty-four tax rate and unassigned fund balance and the two thousand twenty-five ta- tax warrant, which is twelve million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. Ms. Klein.
So the tax rate was set last week. There was a press release that did go out. And so the town's tax rate is two dollars and seventy-eight cents per thousand assessment. The warrant that is in your consent for additional signatures will then be posted after we've attained those signatures. More importantly, what we wanted to talk about was this spreadsheet here. So on Thursday night, we attended the Budget Committee. We let the Budget Committee know that the unassigned fund balance has increased to three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. This is eleven point two-three percent of the general fund operating budgets. That's up from twenty twenty-two, where it was two million...
We blow that up at all?
Two point five.
Even with my cheaters, I can't see that.
Um...
Oh, now we're getting that.
It's still blurry. I'm sorry how that happens.
I do.
Um...
It's called old age.
No, so it was two point five in twenty twenty-three, the end of period ending twenty twenty-two, but your unassigned fund balance falls in the end of twenty twenty-two. They call it the twenty twenty-three because that's when you get it during tax setting.
Did you send that to us?
It's on the portal, so...
Is it? Yeah. I don't see it on the tax warrant. Do you have it?
It's down below.
Oh, yeah.
So...
It's part of the budget.
So...
Oh, okay.
So the Budget Committee asked what the addition was. The addition at the end of twenty twenty-three was six hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The majority of that came from three places. The unfilled positions within the police and the associated benefits that would go with those wages. An increase to revenues, which was mostly interest for sixty-seven thousand, and the sa- a sale of municipal property, twenty-three court land, for seventy-six thousand. So those were the three main contributors. And it, but it did raise it, six hundred and fifty-six, nine eighty-nine. So I will send this to the Budget Committee because they have requested it, but I wanted to make sure that, that you knew that that was the case. The second part of the question was, what is our unspent for this year? That's a more difficult question to tackle. We are pretty confident in saying there's probably about two hundred thousand that if all things remain the same, will fall from the budget. The major, again, we will have a large amount of revenue. And the reason for that is we budgeted, we increased the budget for interest this year based on last year, and we still came in seventy-three thousand, five seventy-one over that. And we had CD interest this year of fifty-four thousand that we did not budget because at the time last year, this time last year, we didn't know we were going to have the funds available to pull it from the general fund and invest it into a CD. So that's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of excess revenue.
Underestimating those lines is not the worst thing. Overestimating would be.
And so we were very cautious last year because we didn't know what was going to happen. That's, you know, right when the Treasury was talking about lowering the interest rates, so we wanted to be safe. We did increase it from sixty to eighty-eight thousand dollars, and if you listen to the Budget Committee at the time, they questioned us raising that interest and whether we are being conservative. I think we were conservative.
Good.
So, you know, two hundred thousand plus a hundred and twenty-eight in revenues, I think will probably be a little over three hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year going to fall in the unassigned.
And that takes into account the money we already took from the subjected unassigned, like we took fifty-six from the PD to pay twenty twenty-five costs and the twenty thousand for the radios came out of the PD budget, bottom line.
That's already adjusting for, yes, the, the expenses that were charged to the budget.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, it's a healthy place to be.
It's nice. That is good. Remember, we were worried about this last year.
Yep. It amazed me how, how much revenues continue to grow.
Yes.
In the economy we've been in.
We're not growing good.
No, they are growing.
Yeah, they are growing, but, you know, the fees are not as high as they used to be, especially the building trades. They're slowing down here.
Uh, building permits are up this year, specifically of course, your larger, your larger developments.
We got two large projects going right now, so...
Yeah. Last year, it did.
Right. Last year, we, we didn't see it as much. You know, motor vehicles has remained steady and we did increase it in the twenty twenty-five budget to adjust for some growth that we saw, but, you know, I think the twenty twenty-five budget is taking into account what we've got this year and what we expect to see next year. We did increase the interest again for twenty twenty-five, but conservatively. So I would rather we have excess than, like the Chair said, underfund those.
Excess is better than nothing.
Um, it did sound as if the Budget Committee thought that the eleven percent was too high for an unassigned.
No, it's not.
I don't, yeah, I agree with the Chair.
What do they believe it should be at, ten percent?
Back to eight percent again, probably.
So the town's policy is eight to twelve. Um, the DRAs is five to seventeen.
So we're kind of in the middle. Upper middle, which is good.
If we had, did not have such a healthy fund balance, this month would have been a much differ- different conversation considering the lateness in the tax bills getting out and the revenue being received.
Nothing wrong with being prepared for the worst.
That's the danger. So...
For the best, but...
That's that line item.
Okay. Very good, thank you. And you did send that over to Chairman Sun?
Yes, I will, and I'll, I'll copy you, and if the board would like to actually see the numbers, I'll just send it out.
Send it to everybody.
Just put us in the blank.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And now I will try to get back to...
Good?
I'm good.
So up next, we have item, uh, item three, reevaluation contract Avatar Associates.
So Avatar did send over the contract for the revaluation for next year.
Yep, I read that.
They have reduced it slightly to adjust for them no longer doing our utilities. It does not equal the amount that we are paying for our utilities, which I feel is important. I have reviewed the data from the twenty twenty revaluation and I've also reviewed the sales of, within the town of Litchfield for the past year, which is what your base is. But my understanding is that the town has not asked for a start-up meeting, and perhaps that's not something that the residents are, are interested in. But if the contract is acceptable, it is the same contract, there are no changes, I went through it. There's no changes from the twenty twenty other than a reduction of, you know, about eight thousand dollars, which they took off for the utilities. So our expendable trust fund for the revaluation is up to a hundred and three. We'll be, have more than enough, we'll actually have excess.
What's the difference in the, the amount that they took out versus the amount we're, we're paying down?
That was going to be my question, too.
The amount that we're paying for the utilities is thirty-three.
It's thirty-three thousand, so they gave us back seven.
And they are, they are claiming that their costs have increased. I do know that assessors within the state, there's a shortage, so there's a number of towns in the North Country that are no longer being serviced due to that fact, so...
That's good.
It's not good.
Good and bad. There are other assessment companies out there.
Yeah, there are, but there's people who are not there.
Unfortunately, the software that, we use Avatar software for both assessing and town clerk.
But what did we do before then? I mean, John, you were on the board back then, what did we do before Avatar?
In the clerk's office?
Assessings, yeah.
Uh, assessing's always been Avatar. Um, in the clerk, it was inter, interwe, interviewers, interware? Interware, yeah. And they, well, I'll leave that free.
Yeah, alone.
I mean, there are other platforms, too, but wh- whether we, if we stop doing our assessing with them does not preclude us from continuing our relationship with motor vehicles. They're, they're independent systems. Say, they use, the town clerk uses Avatar Tax Collect for the tax collections and motor vehicle is also theirs, too. And there are some interdata exchanges, like we do take assessing, I think there's some interconnect that goes to collect to get the assessing costs and do the tax, so...
It's already been done.
Whatever system we have would have to be able to still, we'll feed those systems if we didn't change everything, but...
Because this is the part of the year where I get on my soapbox and say, let me put it out to bid, which is why I don't sign the warrant every year.
But this is just to conclude...
Large amount of money to pay to one company without at least getting a competitive bid.
But this is, this, this cost is not for the next five years, it's just to finish the, this is the evaluation year cost.
Correct. This is the revaluation contract only for the twenty twenty-five, which you've already put the money into the trust to cover.
Yep.
Um, and I wouldn't advise to go out for, to bid for this revaluation because it's time-sensitive.
Sounds like something to do next year.
You have to begin now, in order to be ready for April first. I think you'd want to go out to bid for the five-year contract, which includes the twenty-thirty revaluation.
Yep.
That, that would be the move, if you so choose.
It makes more sense because the information's there.
So right now, if you break that down, it's twenty-six dollars per parcel.
Okay.
With the eighty-six thousand, three twenty-eight divided by the thirty-three, fifty-four total parcels.
So it'd be twenty, twenty-three bucks.
Twenty-six dollars. But I, I do agree, Bob, that we, who else is out there that could possibly offer the same services? But the concern is...
Though they are in the contract and this is part of their thing, so we, we should carry through with this.
We should stick to this.
Put it next contract, we should at least explore.
Can we do a five-year pro, pro?
We do it everywhere else with the purchase of policy, so...
Yeah, so we, after we just signed this, this, the next message is, let's stop developing an RFP for the following year to get out there and do it, and then, you know, the, the best thing that could happen is potentially they'll come back with a better, better offering to keep our business, too.
And find out if it's true in most cases. Kim, you're quiet.
Oh, I agree.
That always scares me.
No, I, it's true. We, we had talked about another one I had asked about, but it was, they were a higher cost, right? We, we had known somebody that used it in another town. And then, and then you, I don't remember the name, but you just said it was more expensive than this one, so, yeah.
There's several others out there. I don't know what they would charge for a municipality of this size. I mean, that's what the RFP would...
Who's running that, Avatar right now, the same guy?
No.
Talking about the President?
Lauren Martin.
Lauren Martin, okay, yep.
But my understanding is that, you know, they didn't have the individual that was performing the utility work.
Correct.
Um, that he had left. I'm very comfortable with who you signed for the utility work. It is a very specialized assessing.
It is.
And so we saw an increase in that value bringing on that individual.
Next.
So there would need to be a motion, and the agreement is in your consent.
For the, for the reevaluation?
Yes.
Motion to approve the reevaluation?
Which I saw already.
And I'm assuming that what they have, I looked back to see, apparently you did not require a bond.
Nope.
Um, so the amount without the bond would be the eighty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion.
What's your motion?
Make a motion to approve it. Evaluation contract.
Motion by Mr. Lynch.
I'll second.
Second from Queenum. Any further discussion?
So this is just to, twenty-one to twenty-five.
Correct.
So it's one more year.
Yep.
For the final payment of eighty-six thousand, three hundred and something else, three hundred and...
It's part of, it's part of the five-year.
Eighty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Yes.
Yeah, it's part of the five, the five-year program.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
You break her up?
What? We have, we'll finish in the contract.
I just...
Wait till the next round.
[laughing].
Okay.
I couldn't help it.
Up next, we have timber tax levy, map eighteen, lot sixty-two.
This is a levy on, of tax on timber that was cut as a result of the Talarico development.
Yep.
So this is assessing one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight, twenty-five for the timber that was removed.
Yep, I saw that today.
And the one beneath it is an intent to cut for the same parcel.
Yeah, the same.
The reason they are different is you have to close one in order to open another because they are different loggers.
Yep.
So...
You got the road loggers and you got the other type loggers. Everybody see it all right?
Yep.
Good with it?
Motion, you'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the timber tax levy for map eighteen, lot sixty-two. Second.
Motion from Mr. Brunel, second from Mr. Gannon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, intent to cut map eighteen, lot sixty-two and sixty-four, which is what Ms. Klein was just talking about.
I'll make a motion and we approve it because it's just the additional area down below.
Motion for Mr. Lynch.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon. Any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Just a note that it's a change of the logger, that's why I was here.
All right, up next, update from Community Power.
So the Energy Committee had asked for a document to be prepared, giving details about community power and where we are and what the process would be. So the document that you see on your portal was prepared by Standard Power and we will be publishing it on the website just to give residents an idea. I have received a few phone calls questioning, you know, when community power will start. The next ever source detail rate will be set in December. They do believe that we will be able to exercise community power at that time, so it would actually be a contract for April start if it's based on December rates. They are, Standard Power is looking to integrate some hydro assets into all of the twenty-eight community power programs. These are, are recs for cost savings, these aren't actual power that you're purchasing. And so they hope that that'll be in the works for the April launch as well. If the December rates, because they're very volatile, they're based a lot upon natural gas rates, if those do, are, don't look favorable, or it's even based on weather, the weather in the end of December is too cold, then we're probably looking for, at a contract in May or June. So, um, they are keeping us updated and we'll see what December brings.
Very good. As far as the opt-out goes, if somebody decides they want, don't want to be a part of this?
Do it again.
I believe that was, the residents that I spoke to, that was their major concern.
Yep.
Um, and so this document here that we'll put on our website really speaks to, residents wanted to know how they were going to be notified.
Yep.
Right? So a press release is going to go out with all of the information, the start date, the rates, the terms. There'll be an, its own designated website, so Litchfield Community Power, that people can go and they can watch the rates and as they change. Notifications will be on our social media, on our website. Every resident will receive an official notification letter to their home informing them of the rates, the terms, and instructions for either opting in or opting out. So, and then, of course, there will be a public meeting... Um, so and then, of course, there will be a public meeting of the Board of Selectmen in order to approve a contract, so.
Good.
Um, any individual customer can opt in or opt out or change their products. At any time after their meet or read date.
I believe also their bill, I thought they said would have something on it as well as one eight-hundred number to call or a website you can go to to opt out if you choose.
Yes, if they missed and it does involve them, yes.
Excuse me.
Questions?
So April is we're looking at possibly numbers?
Yeah, if December's rate is favorable, we're looking at an April launch.
All right, up next, Veterans World War Two Memorial Editions.
And so um we have reviewed the material. Um, and this was a question that um even I didn't know about. There's two lovely um memorials in the lobby. And uh we had, we've had individuals question um how Litchfield residents get on to the memorial. Um, so if there are any residents out there that have a relative that um served during World War Two. Um, please bring in their DD two fourteen papers or their and their honorable discharge. And we can um make sure that the they get submitted to the board for approval. Um, right now, we have two, uh Russell J. Beebe. Um, and he served from nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-six. And Edmund D. Leary. And he served.
Forty-three to forty-six.
Yep, forty-three to forty-six. So we would like to add these two Litchfield residents to the memorial.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, further down the road, if people have relatives that were residing in Litchfield for a period of time. Um, that they should come forward with this, and I think we're gonna get with the Veterans Group, maybe have them kinda review it and bring it to you. So that they can just kinda.
Yes, so um I, you know, I've taken the paperwork and um we have Donna in our office. That commonly reviews this type of paperwork uh for veterans credits, which is very prescriptive by state statute. Um, so she reviewed it, I also spoke with the Litchfield veterans. And they um graciously said that they would help us if we need help with either the approval. Or the uh buying of the tags for the memorial. So our thank you to them.
Yeah, I think the only question that came up in my conversation with Mister Jacques was that the amount of time that for someone to have resided in Litchfield. Like if it was someone that just maybe lived here for a year in the seventies or something, or if it's someone that had spent twenty, thirty years. Like Roland Bergeron's on there, he moved here in nineteen sixty, World War Two veteran, but he spent fifty years in town. Deserves to be on on the plaque and something like that, so we're just trying to work on some of the bugs.
Not necessarily that they lived here when they served.
Correct. Well, they could have, yeah, moved here after they served.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, but haven't served in the war, and there's not many of them left, so.
Yeah, I would agree, there should be some kind of residency stipulation.
Yeah, for an amount of time, yep. We'll figure that out and we'll come back to the board with it.
Yes, for these two individuals, they were long, you know, li- I I'd call lifetime residents of Litchfield.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Oh, the name's Larry, I'm sure.
No, that came out, if he's married over here, I know how it got here.
Moved in right after the war.
Yep.
Need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve Russell J. Beebe, uh who served from nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-six and Edwin.
Edmund D. Leary.
Edmund what was D? D. Leary?
Yep.
Who served from nineteen forty forty-three to forty-six.
You should have made the motion.
Second.
Can't. We have motion from from Mister Gannon and a second from Mister Brunel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four zero one.
Conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Know how little it is, but still is.
I agree.
Give it half abstained.
Half abstained, yeah.
Put your arm halfway out.
In my heart, I didn't. Uh, up next, the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five renewal of Hocker peddler license for Allen's Donuts DBA wagon wheels.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, so um we, this is a renewal. Um, basically what was needed was he brought in his um updated paperwork from the state. And the health um certification that the state went through. Um, he has been a in very good standing with the town. So we would like to renew his Hocker peddler license for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five. It was actually up at the end of this month. Um, and he has done incredible things throughout the town.
I read the form, he's been around. I make a motion, motion, we approve it.
Second, motion to renew of the Hocker peddler license, just read it right there, Kevin. Renewal of the Hocker Hocker and Peddler's license for Allen's Donuts DBA.
He made the motion.
Second.
We'll give you a dual motion. We have motion from Mister Gannon and Mister Lynch and second from Mister Brunel. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Yeah, same here.
Motion carries five zero zero. Oh goodness.
I didn't read the paperwork here.
You did it old school, you just said, let's approve it. All right, up next, warrant article draft discussion and two thousand twenty-five budget updates.
Thank you, Steve.
This is a good one, right?
This is the good one, so as I stated earlier, we were at the Budget Committee. Um, last Thursday evening. And there was a cut to the budget, um, which I believe the chief is here to speak to. Um, so if acceptable, I'd like to start with the chief.
Yep.
Come on, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, Mr. Chairman, good evening, uh Dan Jones, Chief of Police. So uh for those of you, I'm probably all aware, but just in case you're not aware, the Budget Committee cut out twenty-five thousand dollars from the Police Department overtime budget. Um, you know, they did it based on whatever information they had in front of them at the time, which I totally understand, but there's definitely more information than I feel. May impact that decision. So just wanted to make you aware that my plan is to attend the next Budget Committee meeting that it affects the town, which will be December sixteenth. Um, but again, just wanted to make you aware that I planned on being there for that.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome to attend the one before that if you like. We'll be discussing school stuff, but you can still have an audience before everything gets going if you like. I'm sure Mister Sun will put you front of front and center before we get into the.
Yeah, I will be out of the country.
Oh, well then, I don't blame you. We'll see you at the next town meeting. Yep, yeah, I had reservations about them making cuts without you being there to at least defend it, but it didn't happen.
And that's it, thank you.
Very good, well, we thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad you stayed here to wait for this.
So um with that, we have the warrant articles. Um, which we have gone through. Um, and we feel we're in a good place. Um. The they have to be to the Budget Committee for the next town budget meeting um in December.
Okay.
You have one more meeting before that takes place, which is December ninth.
Mm-hmm.
I will not be here for that meeting. So it's up to the budget, to the board if you're comfortable voting tonight. Or if you want to wait and vote on December ninth. Um, on most of these, so the first one that obviously is, there's a number of zoning. Um, which we do not have yet. Then there's the operating budget. Um, and the default, so the operating budget now is about forty-five thousand under the cap. Um, we're hoping that will change after the chief speaks with the Budget Committee. Um, so I'm not comfortable that those two numbers, either the operating budget or the default, won't change.
Why would the default change?
The default may change because the library hasn't given us their default.
Okay.
So that will change mi- you know, small amount. Um, but I think you need the exact information on on both of those. So that would be the first. So second is the human services um and health agencies. So normally, we've had a community member that has weighed in on that. Um, and I haven't been able um to reach the community member yet. But um town staff has reviewed the um applications. Um, and we are requesting that there is a change um in that item. And so I thought it was on the portal.
Yeah, the health agencies is on there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you have five thousand added at the bottom.
It's on there, it's in the draft, the spreadsheet's embedded in draft right now.
Is it there?
Yeah, it's a bit, it's a bit in the draft.
Okay.
So if you expand the draft, you'll see it.
Then it's in the draft, end of six, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's on the second page, second or third page.
Third, third page, the bottom of it.
There it is.
Yeah.
I'll put it in there.
Is that six? Yeah.
So last year, um, we requested that the health agencies be funded twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty. Um, we are actually requesting um a reduction in that. Um, and there's been a few uh small changes. We looked at it as the Budget Committee and I believe the board has asked. At the number of Litchfield specific residents that these agencies serve. Um, and so with that, we have asked uh to have the health and hospice funded at full. We've asked for um an increase in what was funded last year, but not their full request. For Meals on Wheels, but certainly an increase. Um, and as you can see, a decrease in the amount to uh family promise. Which is just the way that the data that we've received. So it actually would be down to twenty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep. It's nice. Something came down.
Makes sense.
Hmm, they could use that.
Very good.
The fu- next um article is Article Seven, which we've already discussed. Um, some we need to add to the ambulance revolving fund. Um, we would suggest that this comes from unassigned in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. This is, we've had an increase um in unpaid ambulance.
Are we gonna vote on any of these, or are we gonna skip till the ninth?
I think we wait till the ninth, give us a chance to look at them and come up with any questions.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Article eight is the property reevaluation, um expendable trust that which we've put twenty-five aside each year for. Um, I would suggest you still do that, even if we go out for an RFP for the twenty thirty. Um, I think evening out so that you don't have the tax, the spikes in the tax rate makes sense. Um. So that's ju- always twenty-five thousand. And certainly, we could adjust it in following years if we saw that we got a.
Really good coverage.
Price, yeah, that is less. Um, Article nine is the Police Department building, which we are still um working on. Uh, both the chief and I with bonding, as we spoke last meeting. Uh, Article ten is the General Assistance Expendable Trust Fund. Um, and we discussed that last Monday night, adding twenty um from unassigned on that as well. Then you asked that there be one police cruiser from taxation, one police cruiser from unassigned. Um, we did flip the order. Um, of those, and then there's one still remaining within the budget, that's the three.
Good.
Article thirteen is the Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund. And so this year, we have seven thousand dollars that has come in as revenue of cemetery pla- plots. The difficulty um with that is by state statute. Um, it says that the legislative body, the voters, must decide where that money sits. And in order to not have that revenue fall to unassigned. And have it available for the maintenance of the cemetery plots of which it is intended. It's best to have it in an expendable trust for that purpose. And have the Board of Selectmen as the agents to expend. That does not mean that you can't move that money to cover the expenses within the operating budget, you certainly may. And, you know, you may look at it and decide not to, or you may look at it and decide that that is needed. But it does hold that money for the purpose in which it was intended.
I didn't think you could move money out of an expendable trust.
Yes.
Except for the specific purpose, which is established.
Yes, so you could only move it to cover maintenance on cemeteries.
Yeah, but not to the general fund.
So the maintenance for the maintenance for the cemeteries is in the operating budget.
Yeah, yeah, you can do that.
So you'd be doing it to.
Just like you would do for general assistance, yeah.
Yep. Just wanna be clear on that.
Yeah, it can only be.
People will read that the wrong way.
Only be moved for the maintenance of the cemetery.
Designated, yeah.
Um, Article fourteen is the lease agreement that we would be entering into. Um, which we've discussed at one nineteen, one hundred and nineteen Hillcrest. Um, Article fifteen is the supplement fire coverage. Um, this is adding forty-seven thousand nine hundred into the fire department's budget. To allow for increased coverage as necessary. And that, so the that will have a tax impact, but until I have a final budget number, I can't calculate that estimated tax. Article sixteen was received by the library. Um, this is increasing the hours for the children's assistant librarian. From seven hundred and six per year to nine hundred and fourteen. And see, it's a very small dollar amount. Um, and the Board of Trustees will be voting on it. So it will have a tax impact. It's rel- it's two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars in twenty twenty-five. Um, but this does increase the hours uh for this children's assistant. That's doing a lot of the programming, working with the kids, especially under in under the new pavilion and so.
More activity going on.
There's a, yes.
That's good.
Um, so I think that's where we see. And then um legal's still working on an amendment for the building code. Which just speaks to the new state language on the state building code. Um, and the last one. Um, and the last one, which is in yellow, is a warrant article we have discussed. Um, I actually received this language from legal counsel. If it is the board's wish to include and establish a new eminent domain expendable trust fund, this would fund the legal, engineering, and other costs, exploring the possibility of requiring a portion of Penetech.
Litchfield's portion of Penetech.
Litchfield, in the, the portion, eminent domain of our structure.
Yeah.
Yes, our infrastructure. Um
Very good.
And so, we have left the amount out and the source to be discussed. If I was to offer an amount, um, eminent domain cases are unfortunately expensive.
Yep.
Um, both legal and engineering and assessing, um, needs to weigh in on that. I would put a hundred thousand, just
It's not as bad as I thought it was.
I was gonna, thought it was a little higher than that.
I did too, yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought when we talked before, we mentioned around two hundred and thirty thousand.
Budget for some stuff too, though, for this.
So, the, um, some of it would fall under the assessing contract, which is now within our budget. Um, and I believe that this is the research. We would have to go back to the voters, um, once we have the research for permission to actually execute the eminent domain. Um, and at that time, we'd have a better idea of what other costs would be associated.
Have questions.
So, I'm not trying to tell you that a hundred thousand would cover the actual case, but we would have to go back to the voters at that time.
Right.
I have a question, this property a question, no taxes been paid on it, right?
On this?
No, which one we're talking about?
We're talking about the one in yellow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They pay taxes.
Oh, oh, I'm thinking the other side, I'm thinking something else.
Okay.
So, I think it's just important that we're very open and straight out with the public, because that will only help us down the road on this.
Yep, I'm thinking, I'm thinking something else.
Information, information, information. But I think as we see the new Penetech deal that's gonna come through, it's not really a deal. I think people, their eyes opened a little bit even more, which, they're already open.
The increased hydrant fees.
Yep.
Um, you know, that certainly, the rate case isn't, um, with the merger of the new company, um, there's a lot of unanswered questions as to how rates would fare in the future.
Yep.
Um, and the rate case that is before the PUC currently would have another rate case right behind it, so.
And I think it's important also to tell the people that for all the work that they are doing on their rate increase case, they're asking us to pay for it, and I think that's the, the biggest kick in the backside of the whole.
And I think the residents of Litchfield deserve to have the question answered as to what does, what would local control cost?
Yep, agreed. And we've had that, that group there from Hudson there, that, that Hudson's that's, we've met with.
Yeah.
That, I mean, they're very, they're very on top of it.
They've been very successful.
Yep, if they feel that we can, we can run this and manage it, not impact the taxpayers, I, I think it's a good thing, and I say that not being a Penetech customer, so. Now, then the fire hydrant costs, I don't have a dog in the fight. I don't think, are you on town water? Do you have town water?
I don't.
You do?
I have Penetech.
I don't, they ran by the house unintentionally.
Yeah. Unintentionally.
Unintentionally?
Well, they put a hydrant in, and it didn't help me with my fire insurance yet.
It's probably not going to.
Right. Okay.
And I think, considering the fact that you have the amount in unassigned, like, we have the amount coming from, that we believe will have in excess from this budget, that it may make sense to do this now, take that money, put it aside, um, be able to do the research to give the Litchfield residents, you know, hard, fast
Yeah.
Answers.
Yeah.
Um.
Yep, they give us the go-ahead on this, I'm all for it.
So, I, I would say unassigned is the, the place to, to fund it from.
This will give, this will be the thumbs up, thumbs down, whether they agree with us or not.
And I, I would be, I would have been totally worried about that if we were in the same position that we were last year, because we were really worried about falling into a bad spot with that, but now it's healthy again, so.
Much better.
Yeah.
And we'll keep it there.
Um, and then, so, I received on, um, Saturday another, um, request from the Recreation Commission.
Hmm.
Um, and there are three parts to it. To either replenish the recreational expendable trust, um, at twenty-five thousand, or to increase the recreation of expendable trust by five, meaning put thirty thousand in. Um, the balance currently is twenty-five thou- uh, thousand four hundred and twenty-six, but we know last meeting, you approved
Toilets.
Up to fifteen thousand
Yeah.
Um, for the mi- for the cameras, so I'm assuming that's what they mean by replenish. Um, but the replenish amount would only be up to fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Um, to put either twenty-five or thirty in would be adding to the fund, to the fund.
Wouldn't it make sense if they're trying to add twenty-five thousand dollars to the remaining, because don't they have the, the floor eventually becoming repaired down the road? I, I'm, I'm assuming they're trying to get it back.
Do you have a meeting this week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah, well, can you find out and get it back to us on that? So, we know what we're, we should, we should at least replenish that fund, I think.
And they do have, I don't know when he's going in, but they do have, um, someone that's, an engineer that's gonna go under the floors. So, I'll find out tomorrow where that stands, and hopefully have a better idea of how much it may cost.
Yeah, you oughta wait till spring, the critters will be out by then.
Yeah, so the way I read this is, bring it back to twenty-five thousand and then add another five for the thirty.
But that wouldn't be adding thirty.
Yeah, yeah, we wanna make sure the wording's right, so it's not confusing.
Five to the twenty-five.
It would be replacing the fifteen that got
Yep.
Yeah.
Approved last week, plus five.
Yep, 'cause it would be ten, there's ten thousand left in there right now, basically.
Right, right.
Clean that up, so it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, so, I, I'm
And I've always said, I thought they should have fifty thousand at least in there.
Because the, between the floor and, we don't know how long the roof is, you know, the roof isn't that old, but it's
I remember being done.
Ticks away every year.
Yeah, they looked all times I was there this summer, I did look at it.
The floor, the roof?
The, the roof, yeah.
Roof's in good, good shape, when you get underneath the building,
Yeah.
I know, no one's, have you been underneath a book?
Been underneath it.
You know what I'm talking about, I put all the insulation up twice in my time here.
Yeah, the roof looks good now, but it's also, what, ten years old, it'll be fifteen, couldn't get the rectifier, I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
I mean, this could just be, this could just be one, this should just be twen- they're asking for twenty thousand dollars to be put back into the They made it into two lines, if you agree to break, if there's ten thousand left in there, right, so fifteen plus five, it's twenty, they're really asking for a total of twenty thousand dollars to be, to be put back in that account, to make it thirty.
Steve, can you get that clarified for us?
Yes, no, the request was to fund it thirty.
Yeah.
In the email that I received, it was to either add twenty-five or add thirty. I, and it depends, if you're trying to increase the fund,
Gotcha.
That's fine, but, um, to replenish it.
Yeah.
But that's a separate.
You would, you would only need fifteen.
Yeah.
Um,
And that, item three's not gonna fly, 'cause they tried to put that back in the budget the other night, and they got voted down.
And I think to actually do a warrant article,
Deliberative.
Eh, yes.
Uh, yeah, there'd be a deliberate move, but I guess the one conversation that I wanna make sure that we're all in agreement is that no matter what, the town is owning those toilets and maintaining and managing those toilets, not the leagues.
Yeah.
They're paying a, a fee to the rec commission that's gonna offset the cost.
Yeah, yeah.
So, don't we have, don't we have to show that in our budget anyway? And show a revenue behind it, so wouldn't it just make sense to have it re-added back in and then show the revenue offsets, as they see it's being offset? Because ultimately, the town has to manage it.
Yeah, 'cause the town does have the contract.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
But we don't have the funds to, for the contract.
Right, but, right, and the la- but the last thing, listen to the conversation from some of the league members at the budget meeting, we're just gonna drop toilets off and take them back, no, it needs to be coordinated by the town to make sure it's one, done correctly. And, 'cause we're, 'cause they're not gonna get the phone call when it's not clean and or
Right.
The town's gonna get it, or the rec is gonna get it, so it's just staying in the, in the management of the town.
Some of the conversation I heard around that, you know, you have too, is they'll lock them, they'll put chains on them. Well, then, if that's, you're gonna do that, then you can go and get your own. And it won't be part of the con- of town's contract.
Oh, they, yeah, they can't put chains on these.
So, Kim did an, an amazing job negotiating this new contract, and it's, you know, in everyone's best interest. And all we're asking is the li- leagues to pay for it, but yes, John, you're right, there's no money in the budget for them, for us to even pay for it. Um, so then, what the leagues would do is put it into the, uh, revolving, the revolving account, but it's still, we need something in the budget to, in support of it.
Right, so town, or so so, Selectmen Brunel's right, it should be back in that line item within the rec budget. And then, over on the revenues tab, we should have revenue coming in to offset that. We can do that.
Could do that, okay.
The budget committee, just, you know, we can explain to the budget committee what we've done, the, the net is zero.
Yep.
Right, so
At zero, but there.
Um, but they, they both should be on each side.
Yeah, 'cause we're not gonna have Each organization calling, you know, the, the portable company to, you know, get it clean, get it moved, get, you know, how much, and how much are they gonna pay now, it's
Rec has to control that. The league's gonna be responsible for them, because if they're taking it out of the town's hands.
They're not, they're just paying a fee to have them there.
No, I understand, I understand that, but I mean, they're, they're basically saying, take it out of the town, and make the leagues pay for it on their own.
Yeah, but they don't maintain.
We, we need this, we need to say, change the wording and say, the, the leagues are gonna fund it based on a fee, the town is gonna put them in their place
Yeah.
To be required, otherwise, the town is gonna control it.
Yeah, 'cause we have to oversee it.
And because it's the, the town has put them in place, we have to have the budget line to say we can afford to do it. And then, the, the way it'll work is when the organization comes forward with their certificate of insurance and field use request, they'll have a check made out to the town.
Yep.
For the porta-potties that require for their league to be there, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything you're over there, you gotta have them there in the first place.
And for special events, when we have to bring in other ones, we make the phone call and bring the other ones in,
We do.
But we charge that fee to the event, if it's a, not a town-sponsored event.
Right.
Correct.
If it's a town-sponsored event, we eat the cost, I'm sure, but.
Right.
Thank Mr. Cutter for his impassioned plea to put this back in the budget the other night, even though it didn't, didn't work out.
Like I said, it needs to go back, at least from a budget perspective, and we have to show revenue against it, 'cause it is a town asset, it's a town service.
Gotta have it there.
Bet you didn't think you'd spend Monday night talking about toilets, did you?
And he brought something tonight too, that was the best part, I forgot I even said that. Keep us honest.
So, we will work on finalizing, um, this.
Yep.
Are we hear, are we hearing that the Penetech is a hundred from unassigned?
That's what I
A hundred, a correct number. I mean, we don't wanna do a hundred and come up twenty, sure.
I don't think a hundred is going to fund the whole cost of the case, but like I said, I do think it will fund the research that
Exploration.
Needed to answer the residents' questions on if they wanna go forward. Um, and I, and I, I did speak with legal on that. So, I believe we've covered everything, we'll put the, the portable money back in, and we'll do, put an offset, um, in the revenues, and then we'll explain that to the budget committee. I did include on the portal the memos that both the chief and I wrote to the budget committee on where we are. The budget committee did add back nine hundred and eighty-five dollars to the library. Um, on Thursday night also. Currently sit about forty-five thousand under the cap, but I do wanna bring up one other, um, just so that you're aware. The Public Works Expendable Trust Fund, I believe, was intended to sit at fifty as a balance.
Think you're right.
And it is down to nineteen.
Where'd all the money go?
That was the truck that
Yeah.
Um
I knew the answer to that.
Okay.
Those were the people at home.
I figured. Yeah, that was our portion of the, of the truck that, the three hundred thousand dollar truck that we got for
Yep, yeah, sixty-seven or whatever, yeah.
Um, so, I, I don't know if, I mean, I'm concerned that we're letting that fund remain too small.
Well, we bring it back up then, where we had it to.
Yeah, I would do a warrant to put the money back in.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
Vote on that, yes.
Who'll vote on the warrant?
I agree.
Okay. So, I'll have these ready, um, for your meeting December ninth. And Ms. White will be attending.
Yes.
I will be in Florida.
On the new police department building, can we get a breakdown of that, of all the costs?
Hmm.
Soft costs as well as the cost of the building itself, so we can go through it. 'Cause the one thing I wanna make sure is that a lot of, the biggest complaints about the fire station when that was built, was there was a lot of fluff in there
Hmm.
That didn't need to be there.
No, there wasn't.
Heated floors.
There's still heated floors.
There's heated floors, man.
They have to be.
Chef's, they don't.
No, they don't.
Now, they heat the garage.
We had a, no, we, we had a fire station right down the road that never had heated floors.
I know.
You didn't
A modern, a modern fire station has, you got a large space and it's been heated.
That's why you put fans up there.
Rises the equipment out quicker. Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, it's things that could have been done to be more favorable to taxpayers, and I'm just saying, what people have said, so, I mean, I wanna make sure that when we come forward with this, that we're not gonna see the same things.
Yes, sir, well, uh, what, so I know that, um, CIP received documents, I'll make sure that you, you all receive them.
Thank you.
That'll be good, thanks.
And the
We want unanimous support on this.
I should mention that the reason that Chairman, um, Proto isn't here this evening, presenting the CIP plan to you is because the schools were not ready.
Hmm.
Uh, my understanding is they are having another conversation on December fourth, which hopefully means that the planning would have a public hearing December seventeenth. which hopefully means that the planning would have a public hearing December seventeenth. And then it would come back to you the twenty-third of December. CIP did cancel their meeting last Friday when we found out the information wasn't available.
Then if we can get a co- um, an amount, how much we're uh um hitting the NSI in fund balance for these warrant articles?
Yes, sir.
That will leave us.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on any of this or anything you wanna see? John, you good?
I'm good, yeah.
Very good, thank you. You have one for petition here, is that just in case something comes up?
Never know.
Okay.
Cameras are back, bases.
Very good. This to the, these to us and we'll get some time to look at them and go, okay.
I'll clean them all up, get you the balances and the information you've requested and send it to you.
Good. I'll go back and find my place now.
Should be town, Mr. Proto, I think.
Is it?
Yeah, you can go up.
That's it.
Gotta go up.
Well, last week, last week was a three-hour meeting, so
All right.
Um, when they have back-to-back meetings.
We still have to go on the uh public attention shots.
Yes.
The town minister report?
Yep.
Okay. So, um
Don't announce it for me.
As I, as I stated, on December ninth through the thirteenth, I'm on vacation.
Yep.
Um, I will be speaking um with the staff um and have access. Um, December sixth, I'm at a municipal manager's meeting um in Newcastle. This is the annual meeting where we discuss legislation that's being
All the fun stuff.
brought forward for next year. Um, Town Hall is closed this Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Uh, Xfinity, if you still have Xfinity cable, sent us a letter, which is on the Selectman Portal on an increase in rates and notice of plan changes for your residents.
Well, that's gonna really upset somebody that I know.
Uh, the DRA, uh Department of Revenue Administration um did their annual assessing monitoring report, so they come and they actually uh pull some permits and and are just checking to make sure that our assessments are correct, that passed a hundred percent. Um, and then um also below, if I know residents may have heard some conversation about this, this is the public uh disclosure for the merger of Penetuck Waterworks, Penetuck East and Pittsfield Aqueduct. Um, so this is a merger of those companies and the rates that would be increasing to, um hence our conversation just a little while ago um on a warrant article. So this is there for the public to view, um and if anyone is interested or has any questions, I can certainly speak to this, um please just drop by the office.
So, Penetuck, Penetuck East and Pittsfield.
Could I get a motion to disable Kim's account between December ninth and thirteenth, she can enjoy her vacation?
I'll second that.
No.
Change your password, don't tell her. We'll leave your phone on.
If we need you, we can call you. So I think it's important that if the folks at home do go on and look at this, they look at item twelve on page three. It's the recovery of their cost-related merger.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
People need to go look at that, and I would highlight that in bright pink. Yep.
That was part of the package today, Rob, but, yeah.
Yeah, I don't like it. Some things we like, we don't like, I know that.
Yeah, well, is I, is I understand, utility structure is they recover all costs, they, everything goes back to repairs.
Yes.
That is the bottom line.
Yes, all, every cost goes back to the repair.
Not good for profit, but they are gonna send a little bit of any buck back to their pay.
They make a lot of money for someone who's not there for a profit.
And I mean, fortunately, Litchfield hasn't had um many repairs to the, our infrastructure. Um, we've had additions to the infrastructure that has been paid by uh St. Cobain and the descent decree.
On the backs of our residents.
On the backs.
For the exposure of health issue, health issues, so
Yeah.
Uh, they're they're gating an asset and we're losing, still losing money. We should have been broke neutral.
The building's closed and it's up for sale.
But it it's, it's important.
And there's a strip out going in front of it.
Exactly. I'll get it.
State hasn't signed off on that final yet.
No, it has a a public hearing in front of the PUC in January. Um, it was approved by the Board of Aldermen um in Nashua at their last meeting, um because Nashua is the shareholder, sole shareholder um of the company, but you know, it's important for residents to look at their, Nashua's infrastructure is aging.
Yep.
So that needs repairs. Um, London Dairy had a warrant article their last uh town meeting. They need infrastructure, so the costs of those infrastructures will come from the combined company.
Yes.
Means you're paying for
Nashua, London Dairy. There's something else.
Dairy feeds pot of London dairy, the waterworks do, too, back in the day.
And so, and there's a small portion of Merrimack that's um in, and there's Bedford. Bedford, so those are in the main
Mm-hmm.
Um, Penetuck Corp. So.
As much as I like to talk about Penetuck, a question for you, when you go up to Ki- Newcastle and hear about the new activity up at, up at North in Concord, would it make sense at that point to take a look at some of those articles? And bring our representative here to talk about it? But if we think there are things that directly impact Litchfield and or benefit or negative for Litchfield?
I think um one of the item- items that I believe I heard during um
They wanna
election time was, yes, um Representative-elect Peoples spoke about actually coming and having a session um with the board. I I would recommend that. Um, I tend to focus specifically on uh financial cuz that's the committee that I sit on, so anything that um impacts municipal finance. Um, but there are other items, and there's an item that I think that we need to look at and possibly have one of them sponsor. And that's this change where the budget committee can only vote on items beneath the tax cap, uh warrant articles beneath the tax cap, cuz that makes no sense to me. The legislative body is the one who can approve you going over the tax cap.
Right. I I think that's perfect to bring both Rich and Ray in and and talk about how we're struggling with it. What can they do to help us change it? I think the tax cap on the budget makes sense. It's everything else that has, that allows our residents to say yes or no. They should not be influenced by the budget committee's position in the sense they can't vote right cuz it's above the tax cap. And like I said, I said before, when this was present, presented to us, I always understood it as this was directly impacting the operating budget only. Warrants were outside of that.
That's correct.
And then it got restated or reworded, our understa- the different understanding came back and now we're stuck with warrant articles being part of it.
Yeah, the tax cap was the operating budget.
That that's how I looked at it.
That's the way I looked at it before.
So it would be nice to have our two newly-elected representatives take an action for us to try to deal with, cuz we have the only town struggling with it.
Well, let the pe- people decide instead of the le- the legislation.
And I think we should manage the school through the same time, so, sorry.
And I I think the residents have the right to hear the budget committee's honest recommendation either for or against, or which, whatever way it is, but not an artificial one because it's, it would take it over the tax cap. I mean, eh
How else we change that?
It just doesn't make sense. It's not the intention of the tax cap.
Plus, the tax cap was voted in a while back, things are changing. We may wanna address that. We even put a new tax cap in, we'll look at ex- expanding, cuz things do change, or something like that.
And I don't think your residents understand that that's the case, because I was speaking to a resident last Friday and I said, well, I'd, I don't think the budget committee would be able to vote in the affirmative for X because it's gonna be over the cap, and the resident had no idea that that was the case. So now I'm, I'm concerned that residents might not understand what the budget committee's intention.
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
Get anything else?
Nope, that's it. Are you here to enjoy us? All right, up next, we have selectmen reports. We're gonna switch it up a little bit, and we're gonna go ladies first tonight.
All right.
And there are
Couple improvement, economic development, and everything else.
All right, let's see, SIP. So, uh apparently you've had some more discussions with the school since Friday. So it sounds like they're meeting December fourth to talk about their side of the SIP. And then it comes back to the planning board for a public hearing on the seventeenth. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, um Chair Proto has that still asked that we meet on December second.
Yes, we're still meeting, yes. Yep. But then we still have to put the school's side in on the fourth, right? Right. And then it comes to the Board of Selectmen on the twenty-third. Do we have a, how much window of time do we need for the public hearing? Do we need a week or ten days?
We need ten days for the planning board to notice the public hearing.
So what about the seventeenth through twenty-third? We're assuming planning board won't probably change it.
Um, no, so if the the question was the planning board would hold the public hearing on the seventeenth.
Make sure we have, I'll leave a post, that's my question.
I'm sorry, the nineteenth. That's why I didn't make
Right, six days before.
No, seventeen.
Seventeenth, I was right.
Okay, so the seventeenth is the planning board.
Right, so that means that we would have to have that information from the schools by the day after their next meeting in order to include it in the plan and have the ten days to notice it. It's the public, it's the planning board that holds a public hearing.
All right, and then uh we're coming here the twenty-third, right? They're coming with the SIP here, right?
Right.
Do we need ten days there, or is that just our normal Board of Selectmen?
No, that's your normal.
All right, just wanna make sure if we had another public hearing here. All right, good. So I think that's the plan, from what we said, so we meet the second anyway, our normal meeting, school board on December fourth. Goes to the planning board, public hearing on the seventeenth, and then comes to the Board of Selectmen on the twenty-third. Great. And that met, does that meet any of your warrant article, how do we do the sixteenth, you said, right? So we shouldn't, we should be okay, I don't see a warrant article coming out of the SIP.
Yes, the only warrant article that is on the SIP plan is the police building.
On the town side, which we are, we're good on the town side, yeah. We were just concerned about the school. All right. But, so, okay, so we'll wait to hear from the school. All right. Economic development, we are not meeting on Thanksgiving Eve and we're not meeting on Christmas. So, I think January is where it's coming in, but in the meantime, Laura Gandia from zoning and Jayman Carr from NRPC are looking at the zoning ordinances of some of the input that we heard about feathering businesses in three A. So they're look, gonna look at that. NRPC was very busy last Wednesday. We uh had four tip amendments at the county level and four at the state level. So there was all approved. The way I also ended up looking at twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-six. Geez, that's eleven years from now, twelve years from now. Uh, we did all, approve all of those tip amendments, they're all traffic and uh street and highway related. And that's all I have for this week, I think for the year, until we meet December twenty-third.
For the year?
Yep.
Up next, we'll do conservation, John Brunel, and emergency management.
Yeah, so no, nothing emergency management is new. Conservation is a quick update, George, um, George Farm. Um, survey plan was received over the weekend to the commission, uh, a meeting with the the family hopefully this week around the sub- subdivision and try to finalize that, and then they're gonna get on the planning boards. I guess, to talk about the subdivision at that point, so that's there, and and as you already heard, there's been no meetings, but you heard the update there, so that's it, that's everything.
All right, Mr. Lynch, planning board.
We're in, the meeting we had, I've already talked about, we're meeting.
Very good, Steve, Rick?
So Rick, uh, we meet tomorrow. Um, reminder that the Spirit of Litchfield Tree Lighting Event is next Saturday, December seventh. Some of the topics um we talked about last week are um doing maintenance around the building, urinal needs to be repaired, covering the heating unit, uh, stuff like that. Um, and then heritage, we met last Thursday. The two topics were really discussed, one was around the historical district committee. They met with the planning board and they're rewriting their warrant article, or the proposed warrant article. And then there was discussion on the uh s- semi-quintcentennial in twenty twenty-six. Um,
Funding it.
Yeah, funding it, and then what we're doing, the discussion was, everybody's gonna be doing things on July fourth, so we're trying to figure out, do we wanna do it maybe before, do a little bit later, and then it'll be a week-long, a weekend-long event. If you wanna add, Corey, as a member of the Heritage Commission?
I think you covered it. Yeah, they, they were, yeah, they said that uh people would be gone July fourth and that uh it was suggested was that maybe we s- we do it a little early and have a, a multi-day um event.
About Memorial Day and stuff like that. Cuz the kids are all in school, so it'd be more people than not.
We could do that and tie it in, Monday morning, they do the, they do the ceremony at the historical site.
Right, and do a must-have a rain weekend.
Very good. Outstanding. All right, um, budget committee, we've talked about quite a bit of it tonight.
Yeah.
We did start getting into the school, which uh has a one-point-seven million dollar increase in their budget, proposed. Hasn't gone through cuts yet, um although it's somewhere along the line, the school board did cut a hundred and nine thousand off of it. But um, a lot of their increases from the contract that passed for the teachers last year. But um, and then they have the health and dental, whatever, but we haven't got into the the nooks and crannies to find where the, where all the spending is, so um we'll start digging into that coming up. And then facilities, um, everybody should have probably got a survey in the mail.
No, yeah.
You didn't get any survey yet, huh?
Unless it came today, I haven't seen that one yet.
A lot of people said they got them today, so um they're still trying to figure out what they wanna do, you know, as far as like with Griffin and whatever and I don't know, my opinion is that a year's gone by and nothing's been done to the building, so it's another year wasted, but it's carrying through their process, so. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything else they wanna say before we go into, back into non-public?
I'm ready.
All right, well, all right, then, that will conclude this public portion of our program.
This gentleman?
Um, we're having returning into non-public um under RSA, and I gotta get all the way back to the top.
Um, under RSA, and I gotta get all the way back to the top.
Let's see, RSA ninety-one dash A, semicolon, three, two, A in parentheses. Dismissal promotion and compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee. Or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected one has a right to a meeting and two requests of the meeting be open. In which case that request shall be granted.
Do we have a motion going to non-public?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Brunel, second.
Ken.
Second by Mr. Lynch, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries five zero zero, we're going into non-public at eight thirteen PM, every one of them have a wonderful Thanksgiving. And eat a lot.
Damn.
Can I ask a quick question before you jump into it?
Sure.
You mentioned something about a lease at one nineteen Hillcrest Road, can you?
Oh, it's a new cell tower.
Okay.
It's up, it's up high, the sorry stuff up there, you don't, you know, you're not seeing it, but this town is suffering with coverage.
Oh, yeah, well, that fits me a lot, but I I just wanted to know what it was.
Yeah, it it's been a five year long effort to try to do it, and we've finally got someone to come forward, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And where's it gonna be?
It's.
It's a water.
Water tower.
By the water, okay.
Right next to our, just the one, the tower I just put up three or five years ago.
It's called Rocky Hill for us.
We're gonna take ours down and.
Get you up by Colonial Drive or whatever, it's.
Yep, yep.
It's Rocky Hill.
Coverage, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you, have a great Thanksgiving, man.
They don't use the right definitions.
What's that?
It's Rocky Hill.
It is Rocky Hill, I only for, we said what the.
No, it's really.
Rocky Hill.
It's like, it's actually ten Colonials, what I always go.